All right, I'd like to call to order the work session tonight. First of all, thanks everybody for being here. This is a busy week, I know, for a lot of people. And not only tonight, but tomorrow night. We start at 4:30, so again, thanks everybody for being here.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to turn it over to Denise to get us started. And we will end at 7:30, so I'm going to be respectful of everybody's time tonight, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. The first thing we'd like to do is just remind you, go back to the purpose of tonight. Why are we getting together? And the first is just to have the board and our community have a thorough understanding of our current and projected financial realities. We've gone through a lot of transition the last three years, and so this is kind of a resetting the foundation about where we've landed and how we might want to go forward. And then we also are going to need to have some administrative direction for future revenue and expenditure choices that we have to serve our students. Just to remind folks that we had some previous discussions about finance, and the first was Finance 101, and then Finance 102. But during that time, we were really trying to help everyone in our public understand that school funding is sometimes a little bit tricky because there are buckets of spending, and I'll let Kristen talk about this a little bit more, that can't many times be transferred from one bucket to another. So I'll let Kristen talk about that, but this is, that's our purpose for this evening. We're going to go through, and we'll share information, and then we'll be stopping and checking and making sure that you understand, or if you have questions along the way. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristen Hoheisel.
Thank you. If you recall, and I realize that it's been a little bit of time since the Finance 101 conversation, one of the first slides that I typically present is the funds, all of the funds that the school district has. And the buckets, and they were presented in numbers. So Fund 1 was the general fund, Fund 2 was food service, Transportation's 3, which is combined, Community Ed is 4, Building Construction 6. We talked about that during the Finance 101, but sometimes, you know, there, and I understand there's not a complete understanding of how, once something gets deposited into a bucket, can it get poured out into another bucket? And so this diagram, or this page, is to help maybe process what can and can't support other funds. I will say this, for the most part, the general fund can be used to cover other funds. For example, if the board were to say, "We're in deficit in food service, we want to move money over there to make them hold," the general fund can do that. However, food service cannot be used to cover the general fund. The general fund is the only one with that flexibility unless it's approved legislatively or by a bigger organization than the school board. And so food service is self-explanatory, I think community service is self-explanatory. I know at times, the building construction has caused a little bit of confusion as far as, we went out, we received $97.5 million. Why can't that be used to cover salaries or the general fund deficit? Why can't that be used to do other things? That fund in particular now is more constrictive than ever because it used to have our alternative facilities or long-term facility maintenance in there. That's no longer in there. It's truly the dollars that we bonded for, and so we even need to follow the review and comment. So whatever that looks like, that is all that it can be used for, unless we receive some sort of modification otherwise. Debt service, again, is the school district's mortgage. We've taken out loans, you know, for the projects we've done, we need to pay those loans. And then the trust fund is, we serve as the trustee. Scholarships, things like that, is that bucket. Again, you can pour the first bucket, and that's why the red line, pretty much over every other. Once you pass the red line, you can't pour back. In the fall, late fall, the Budget Committee had gotten together to develop a list of assumptions, and we do that for three years. We assume revenues and expenditures in various categories for three years. The Budget Committee is comprised of administration, school board members, teacher representation, and principal representation, just to provide an overreaching perspective, if you will, of how we're coming up with what we believe is going to happen. And so when looking at this slide, and this specifically focuses on revenue, and this is 2018-19, which is the next school year through '21, we do a three-year projection because anything honestly beyond that, we're now talking multiple cycles. Multiple cycles legislatively, more than one biennium, multiple cycles for contracts. So if you, if you're off with any of your assumptions, it just gets so skewed. So many things can change over the course of five years as opposed to maybe being able to predict three years if you're only in one and a half, you know, the timing of the biennium or contracts. So we, one of the first things we look at are enrollment projections, and we actually break it down kind of by grade level, but just to summarize for purposes of this presentation, we said that we project that next school year, we will have 8,210 students, and that will be K through 12, K through 12 would be those numbers.
Not pre-K?
Not pre-K. And honestly, pre-K would be, is more, it's the kids that we have in the building that feed the program, but it wouldn't be necessarily the funding for the general fund. We just look at what we have. And we also don't look necessarily at 12-plus. Those numbers aren't large, but we just look at K-12. We look at trend, we look at demographics, and I would say, out of the group, the approach has been the last few years is try to not be as conservative as what has been done in the past. So I would say we're moderately optimistic that these are the numbers. We try not to go too low or be too conservative, so we're skewed in our budget. So if we're going to err, we might err to the side of plus as opposed to minus.
Can you say just a little bit more about how you figure, how do you, we know what those projections are? What is that based on? Is that, is there a certain process of data collecting to get to that number?
There is. There's multiple handouts that are given. Again, it's historical, so we can see trend. It's birth rates, it's the demographic study. Trying to remember what else is in there.
So that's the Heisel-Reinhardt Study?
It is. And the update to that, and then when we have a new study. And sometimes, honestly, it's feel. It's, you know, when I say trend, it's not just looking at where have the numbers been, it's where have we missed? Why have we been off? You know, can we assume that to be the case in the future? Some of it is just people's feel. So we use those sorts of information, and then I think that's an area that we have quite a hearty discussion on where we believe it should be. Moving on to general education funding, increase at 2%. That number was easy because that number was actually already set for next year. And again, we look at trend, or maybe what our associations, or what we're hearing out legislatively, wherever, what we believe the next biennium could look like for the state, and we settled on 1.5% and 1.5%. We assumed that, given the state's economy, there would be no tax or aid shift. Decrease in literacy incentive aid to $415,000. This represents about a $12,000 to $13,000 decrease from what we've typically received. It's just saying, we're seeing a slight decrease, let's stick with the slight decrease. No change in compensatory. Again, compensatory is somewhat based off of our free and reduced population. No change in referendums. Special education growth at 4% each year. This is in conjunction with what we believe special ed expenditures will go up from. So if we assume that the, that, you know, salaries and what have you increase by 4%, we're going to assume that there is also a correlation between that and the revenue that we receive. It's not making the assumption that we're receiving anything more legislatively. It's just saying, we recognize there's expenditure growth, therefore, there should be revenue growth. Status quo on Q-COM. All other formula-driven revenue that follows the general education formula. So we've discussed before that there's multiple formulas. Some are just a flat dollar amount, like gifted and talented, you just get so much per child. That's not tied to a general education percentage increase. So some formulas are not tied to the gen-ed formula, and some are. And we're assuming that the formulas that are tied to the general education revenue, if that goes up, excuse me, by 2% or 1.5%, so will those formulas, that the state doesn't parse that out and make it different depending. And then no other change to miscellaneous revenue. Again, we just kind of watch what people give in donations and whatever instead. We're not going to change that.
Kristen, before you go on, are there any other clarifications or questions that the board has about the budget assumptions that, just a reminder that this is a group of people come together, it's not one or two people in our finance department, it's that group who talks and has a dialogue about what those assumptions are moving forward. Is there anything that you need or would like clarified before we move on to the next for expenditures?
Can you tell me, since we've been doing it this way, how close have we been to hitting the numbers with regards to our estimates?
I would, I would say we've been very close, and it's a recall. I want to say, you know, give or take, we're probably somewhere between, and it doesn't seem like a lot, or it seems like a lot, but in the scope of $100 million budget, it's a percent. We've maybe been a percent off. So let's say 800,000 to 1.4 million. In the past, it was millions. So I think, I think it's, honestly, I wouldn't take a different approach. I think it's very useful to have, again, people dialoguing that are looking at it from very different lenses and talking to, you know, the Principals Association has different, a different take than, and the Teachers Association than maybe the business people. You know, I mean, there's just different lenses. And honestly, what goes on in our community, and, you know, what's the, what's the feel in the buildings? All of that is brought in, and I think that's a very positive thing, and it's reflected as far as our accuracy.
You said this, but can you, one more time? All other formula-driven revenue follows general ed. Gifted and talented is not tied to general, so what, just throw out an example of what you're talking about there.
So GT, and I'm not going to remember the exact dollar amount, I won't, I was going to say, I thought it was 14, but $13 per, not sure it didn't go up the last session, but $13 per child we get for gifted and talented kids.
Okay.
Formula can go up, GT could stay at $13.
Or it could go to 16.
They can randomly choose, there's no assumption that that goes up. However, the formulas that are linked, the dollars in particular categories that are linked, tend to go, if you say 1.5%, then all of a sudden, you're seeing it in different, in different formulas that are linked to the gen-ed formula that also increase that amount.
Okay.
I have two questions. Can you just say a little more about the sped growth again? So you said that is in terms of identified needs or having to do with cost associated with?
Cost. And it's not, what it is, is, for simple math, if we currently have a million dollars in expense, or let's say we get reimbursed a million dollars in expenses, and we know, you know, teacher salaries, para salaries, needs of the child, what have you, you know, those are increases, we have 4%, 3%, 4% inflation every year, that's just saying, we're going to get that in revenue too. It's not saying it's covering the gap that exists currently, it's not talking about cross-subsidy. It's just saying, we know we have increased program costs, and per the state special education formula, we should get reimbursed for some of those costs.
Okay, okay. And my other question is, is there any factoring in of unfunded mandates that the state puts upon us?
Well, possibly, but that's on the expenditure side, I'll get to that when we get to the next slide.
But to that, unfunded mandates, the big question here for me would be, who's going to get elected governor in the fall? Because we know Dayton's been very generous to schools. We don't know who's going to take over that position. And it could be a very scary proposition if we get one party running the Senate, House, and the governorship as far as education.
Absolutely, and these are the conversations that we have at committee level. It's, I mean, those are the things that we talk about, especially if we're talking about, you know, current biennium and the next biennium, it's what, what does the political atmosphere look like, both at the federal and state level, and what are, how comfortable are we feeling with, you know, the status quo, if you will?
I, sorry, I did not quite get the answer that, and I probably didn't ask it right, but, but I got the gifted and talented, but what is an example of, when you say all other formula-driven revenue, like what?
Something that automatically goes up with the general.
Like what, can you, do you have an example?
Equity.
Okay, okay.
And then finally, for me, when we hear about Governor Dayton talking about pre-K funding, where does that come in with regards to revenue for our district?
It comes into community education.
Okay.
And we're, this, all of this, kind of back to the general fund bucket, we're not talking about any other funds. This is typically our focus, at least during, during budget process. It's our largest, it's the one that runs the building. We don't include, we don't take that into consideration, the only time they come into play is if they're special education. But other than that, just pre-K funding would be housed in our community education department, and therefore, that bucket.
Can we take that bucket and use it in others if we're?
Can't spill that way, can only spill this way.
It's on the first page there.
And the, and the, I think one of the things with the pre-K funding, even if we have it, is many times you put, every year, we put in a grant application to have funding and scholarships and things for our families, and we haven't gotten that yet. It's a very small percentage, you have to have a larger population of freed and reduced or subgroups that need that support, and we aren't at that marker yet in Stillwater, and so we have not received any significant funding for special education, or not special education for early childhood.
And not that it's for nothing. I mean, obviously, we all know, if you are able to get those kids in earlier, it could help with future intervention services, which could save expenses down the road. I mean, it's just, you know, the first thing out of the gate, there's no funding for the general fund. The hope is that, you know, we have better educated children that then won't need the services as we move along.
Question. You know that I was asking about title funds, et cetera, and it seemed, this year as compared to previous year, we got about $230,000 or less. Did the federal government cut that? Did we have different rates on free and reduced?
So we did not have different rates. One of the components of how the distribution comes from the feds is actually the rest of the nation, I shouldn't say the rest of the nation, that's, parts of the nation increased their rates. So the, you know, the proportionate share. So a year ago, the feds cut title funding, and then more funding went east, just because they, their free and reduced increase, ours held, but it didn't matter because we still lost because more of the pot that was available went to other states.
My understanding is there's a concentration factor.
And the Midwest does not fare well. I mean, we fare well as far as we don't have the poverty that the rest of the nation faces.
Which is good news.
Which is good news, but then we don't get the funding.
It's a good thing we don't need it.
Yeah.
Well, we need it.
We need it, but, yeah.
We don't qualify.
We don't, yeah, it just, it's, it's just a, it's like, it's like taxes, you know, if your home value stays and your neighbors goes up and the dollar, you know, it's the same concept.
You said that the long-term facilities maintenance funds used to be under the Building Construction Fund? That sits where now?
General.
General fund. Is it kept, are there parameters around it, and sort of, how is that kept in the general fund? Like, that can't be spilled over into something else? It's sort of isolated within the general fund, is that correct?
It is. And it's like, it's like, so operating capital is also in the general fund, but it's restricted by code, and you can only use it for particular purposes, and we can track that.
Okay. And then I have another question too. The committee that you have that helps create the budget assumptions, can you tell us a little bit more about that? If I knew someone who was interested, how does a person get on that committee, and does it turn over from time to time, or how does a person learn more about it?
So I, to the specific groups, to the teachers group and the principals group, I reach out to their appointed leader or representation, and I say, you know, does anybody have interest? Who would you like? What does this look like? And I provided names, those names have remained constant.
Okay.
And then as far as board members go, it would typically be the finance working committee that we, that's already established. Those would be the board members that would sit on that committee. I, of course, have Lynn Ritzer as my staff member who sits on there with me. And then as far as community members, we actually haven't had community members be brought in, can certainly have that conversation, and I would just ask that someone reach out and, you know, say that, let me know that they're interested, and I'm.
Yeah, that might be cool to have, somebody from like a city council or something like that might be useful.
Yeah. All right, thank you. You're welcome. On the expenditure side, we assume, and again, because this is a budget committee, we assume that there's zero increases in contracts except for roll-up costs, which are steps and lanes. The reason why we do this is, well, it's the school board's responsibility to establish parameters, and we're not going to build a budget based on parameters that we don't know are already established and settled. So as we move forward now, 18-19 is complete, but as we move forward to 19-20 and 20-21, those costs, like, an increase above steps and lanes are not included with the, with the budget. You can see what approximately steps and lanes cost us a year for all bargaining groups, just the movement. But beyond that, it's the board's decision to decide what contracts look like and what that impact looks like to the budget.
So just to clarify for this one, it says approximately $960,000, that's the roll-up cost, not the cost for steps and lanes?
That's all of it.
Total package.
What do you mean by roll-up cost?
Well, that, so, well, it, I mean, it's steps, essentially, it's steps and lanes for the teachers. So if, you know, if you're on step one, you're moving to step two, and then you're moving to step three, those are your steps, lanes.
So not any increases that we negotiated?
That we've negotiated, yes.
Okay.
But you, these are for contracts that are hypothetical, remember, because we're moving two years out.
Oh, got it, yeah.
So we assume no increases, other than people continue to step.
Right.
And what our average lane increase is, we take that, that's for all, all groups.
Okay.
So prior to settlements, we know we're approximately spending just over $1 million a year.
Yeah, just because of that, okay.
The dollar amount, is every, I mean, I'm just curious, is every district at this steps and lanes and at this dollar amount in general? I mean, is this a general number? Are we high, are we low? Do you know offhand?
I would not, you can't look at it as a dollar amount, because it depends on the size of the district. To me, it's the percent of impact, is, you know what I mean? If you have a budget that's 8 million versus a budget that's 100 million, that dollar amount's going to look different. But it's still the same percentage, if you will, increase. You know, it, it varies, because it depends on the, on the age of the staff, the experience of the staff. Some people have newbies all over the place, it's the natural turnover. Some people have a, have a well-seasoned staff, or have different, they put, you know, marketing, they place people differently on a salary schedule. I mean, all of that comes into play. So I hate to say, yeah, this is normal or isn't, I'd say everybody, it's not inconsistent, maybe that's the best answer, it's not necessarily inconsistent.
So are the steps and lanes the same for, like, Moundsview or Monta Midae? Those aren't consistent? So that's what I thought you were just saying, but even that's not?
Every district's contract is different.
So question I have, is that staff development remains at 2%? Is that in statute, that it has to be 2%? Okay, so it's designated funding in that sense?
Yes, the designated set aside.
Yes, thank you.
We spend more than 2% when you look at our teacher days. 2% is the bottom rate expectation we spend.
Is it just teachers?
We've, particularly over the last three years, we have made sure we expanded that to our professional staff, non-licensed staff as well, so we spend parts of that on our nurses. We work with special ed, depending upon what they need, for, for professional development, and then our paraprofessionals are also a part of our professional development committee that figure out what we need.
Okay, so, so when you say that, and you say, okay, we spend more than 2%, let's just stick with the 2% for now. Is that just teachers, or can it be administrators, parents, nurses?
It's for everybody.
That can count into the 2%, and you're saying you go above and beyond that. Typically, is it 3% then?
Well, we have, off the top of my head, four full PD days in a year, approximately $250,000 a day for salaries. So our budget right now is a little over a million, so that'd be about $2 million, right?
No, that's a million, if it's four days at a quarter.
Yeah, plus the, plus the set aside.
Oh, the set aside's a million fifty?
The set aside's a million.
A million fifty?
Million fifty-five, and then the actual salaries for the days are another million. So basically, it's double that, so 4%.
Moving on to the insurances, this is just the district contribution, it's not saying this is what insurances are going to increase. It's just saying what, and with the health insurance, it assumes the single coverage, you know, it all moves. We've done well with our insurance rates compared to market, but there still is a district cost. It also assumes that 1 million of OPEB payments will come out of the trust. We've talked about staff development, transportation costs increase, two, two of these years are already set via contract, the 2.5 and the 2.25, and then we estimated another 2.5% increase for the year that we are out of contract. We have, again, it was based, we have a four-year transportation contract, I would say we do relatively well with our rates right now. So that can change, there can be some volatility given the employment market, if they have to start paying drivers more, a fuel cost increase, their cost of business increases, those rates are going to go up. They're, they're just going to. I think this is a very optimistic number, that we're going to be able to hold that last year, but given, like I say, we've all, we've all witnessed what the employee market is, and that they're going to just have to start paying people more to do that job, and their costs, their expenses go up.
This has been the trend, and it also does include the increase for transportation for our grade reconfiguration, so it's off current.
So that's what my question was, do you remember the percentage increase for this year?
Uh, no, I'd have to look. I want to say we were, we're in the 2% somewhere for this year, I just don't remember what, 2% and something. Projected retirees, what this number is implemented for, and we average 12, is when you have a teacher, again, who one would assume is on the high end of the salary schedule, just given years of service in potential lanes, they're going to be making more, or we're going to save money from them walking out the door and hiring a new teacher. So if your high end makes, you know, let's say 70,000, and you hire someone at 45,000, there's a savings there, because you're not paying that 70,000 from the year prior, you're now paying 45. Where the dollar amount comes into play is you're still paying insurance for the retiree, and you're paying insurance for the new one, so that savings isn't entirely pure, but this is meant to reflect. On average, we have 12 people retire, we bring in 12 new people, and we save just shy of $20,000 per person a year to reflect that retiree savings. Does that make sense? Severance goes to 700,000 per year, this is money that is set aside. So when we talk about the unassigned fund, a reserved account, the assigned fund, money that ultimately affects our fund balance that we're required to pay, but it's pulled out of fund balance, this is one of those. We have continually trended down on the severance payment, I want to say at one point, and I'm just, I don't know, I have a number here. At one point, we actually used to set aside 1.6 million for severance payments, and we've bounced around a little bit from between 1.1 million, this year, we're at 850,000. We were at 700,000, we moved up to 850,000, now we're going back down to 700,000. So it's a set aside that we pull out of the bottom line to cover those expenses. We've also assumed a 2.5 We've also assumed a two and a half percent increase in utilities a year, five percent on property and liability insurance, and three percent on workers' comp, and that's each year, that we're, again, it's, it's just cost of living increases. Supplies and materials will go up two percent each year. And then this was, again, this was in the fall that we were talking about this. We, we made the assumption that there, that there was going to be a TRA increase and a PERA increase and we were kind of taking our best estimate. We did not implement it for eighteen nineteen, but we did say for nineteen twenty and twenty and twenty-one. We thought legislatively they'd get it together and if they didn't adopt it this year, they would certainly do it the next. So that was our shot and that was what was built into the budget. Again, we all know that there is a bill that has moved through. Don't know if there's going to be funding from, in aid to support that, but that is what is built into our budget as we look at nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. So this graph represents kind of, and it's, it's a lot of numbers and they're small numbers and I apologize, but just trying to make a visual impact of kind of what our history has been. The red line, the red horizontal line going through the middle represents the board's fund balance policy at five percent. The reason why that increases is that five percent is based off of expenditures. So as our expenditures increase, your percent, the line increases, the dollar amount. You might start at five million, you move to five point two million, you move to five point five to maintain that five percent. What I'd like to address to you are a few anomalies in this chart. First off, if you look, we go from four point six seven two million dollars in, let me see what year, thirteen fourteen, to all of a sudden nine, over nine million in fourteen fifteen. What that is, what happened there and kind of as I was talking about the set-asides is, per accounting principles, when a board is spending more than it is receiving, so your expenditures are greater than your revenue, you need to pull out the money that you believe you're going to be deficit spending the next year and take it away from your fund balance. And what it's called, it's called a subsequent year budget. So when Aaron comes out to audit, if we say that our budget looks like we're one million dollars, we have one million dollars more in expenses and revenue, he pulls that off the fund balance right away. He has to, that's an accounting principle to do that. When we spiked, that's actually when our revenue is equal. That was the, the big year of adjustment that we worked through with Tom Nelson to level everything out. So the money that was set aside for that, that subsequent year budget went away. We were saving five million, we were saving three million, the deficits that we had. All of a sudden, we didn't have that and we could put that back into the unassigned fund balance. Does that make sense? That's the hard one, that's the hardest one of this whole slide to understand.
Say what it's called, we get a subsequent year.
Budget. So as long as your expenses exceed, you have to pull that out. So when you look at a year-end fund balance, you've already stated that we know that money's, that money's already used.
He took the money out of our fund balance at that time to level everything off, is that correct? No.
So what, go ahead Shelley, you try.
Yeah, we'll see how this goes. I think a lot of cuts were made so that increased our fund balance. So we actually
Okay.
weren't deficit spending that year. We, we had cut enough that we could add to our fund balance.
The money that was set aside?
Didn't have to set aside as much anymore because you had made the cuts to even that out. And so then that could go back into the fund balance and you didn't have to have that set aside.
But had we not made those cuts, we would have had to use that set-aside money, which we had, which is put away
Well, and I'll, I'll even
Because of the projected deficits.
I'll even, do I have, I do have a little red light. If you look at, so this was where we, where our audit was for sixteen seventeen and you look at this is where our projected is for this year and you see a slight decrease there of about, hmm, what is that, eight hundred thousand, give or take? The only difference there is that what, is what we originally projected, that our expenditures would exceed our revenue. So that money, we took eight hundred thousand and pulled it away from unassigned and put it into a reserved account for that overspending. Otherwise, we're essentially flat.
Well, that was my question, if our, if we're a balanced budget every year, is our line straight across?
We look just like that. And, and again, we would, if we, if we had, if we had changed our budget by eight hundred thousand, you know, if we didn't have the transportation increases and that, we literally would be, but we made no adjustments, so we had to set aside, but we're pretty close to being level.
That's that transportation increase that we talked about with the grade reconfiguration, that's the difference right there. The other thing I want to comment on, you know, Kristen had mentioned, we looked at possibly using the percentages there for you instead of the numbers because we know it's hard to see, you have it on your hard copy. The reason we didn't is we wanted you to be able to align it with our past audits or any of our numbers that we've had in the past. So, we know it's hard to read up on the screen, but when you do some of the comparisons, this will match. If we had the percentages, it'd be harder for you to do that, but we can also do that.
So then I'll move in, so that's the big, why it looks like there's a big dollar amount because we did move more money to, into unassigned because it freed up, because we became balanced. And then, what happened, why, why the, why are we looking to go down here? We set aside two million dollars for technology. That moved from the unassigned fund balance to an assigned account. We set aside a million dollars for class size.
Remember that class size piece was to reduce the number of multi-grade classrooms that year between the transition when we were looking at about ten different multi-grades. So that was the money for that, not actually saying, you know, first grade, fifth grade or whatever's gonna go down, it was to reduce the numbers of multi-age classrooms or multi-grade.
And then we had one million dollars for transition.
Which was mainly middle school?
Yeah, the conversion. And so when you look at going from
Not, and I would say
I wouldn't say it was mainly middle school, that was, that was the, more of the switch costs for
Grade configuration.
Grade configurations from sixth moving up and ninth moving up. And it included everything from music instruments that needed to be purchased to additional curriculum in certain areas, to the change to curriculum that took place in the sixth grade now that was in the middle school, the change to ninth grade curriculum now that was in high, all of that kind of stuff.
What about the actual move itself?
Wasn't that like extra staff time and costs and, you know, associated with all of the moving? And was that part of the building construction fund, was that not part of this? No, it wasn't part of, wasn't part of building construction, but part of, you're exactly right Sarah. Some of them were one-time kind of fixed with those moving costs and things like that. Others were staff, like the middle school, Mike, as you had mentioned, that were ongoing expenses.
Because I can remember a conversation we had, I think, was which model middle school to take. And we had one that we wanted, but we couldn't take the top one there?
Right.
That wouldn't have been transition dollars though, that was as we move into this budget year and how, you know.
Okay, so that's someplace else.
So just to be clear, these were one-time purchases or decisions that are not ongoing expenses? Or is part of the transitions, are any of those numbers in the yellow circles?
It was money, two answers to your question. It was money that was set aside for those particular purposes, money that was set aside for one-time purposes. This cost is ongoing. We just set aside money. So to say is it for ongoing costs? It addressed issues.
But is it two million every year?
No.
I thought it was a two million and then like a four hundred thousand or something, three, it was something.
Yep, I get it. So yes, you're, the question is, the money in the yellow bubbles, is that one-time money? Is that a one-time bucket money? Yes, that was set aside for one-time stuff.
Okay, so that's not reflected going forward every single year, that's just in that one year?
But how would that not be for class size? Because if we went back to multi-grade classrooms, we'd save money. If we believed in the philosophy, let's multi-grade all over the place, there'd be a savings. Once we decided not to do that.
Once we, once we consolidated the schools, then the, the numbers for class size evened out. So this was for the
This was the year prior to this year.
Transition year, the last year that Marine and Withrow and Oak Park were open. With the numbers of, the way the numbers laid out for the kids, there would have been multi-grade classrooms. We knew we didn't want that, so we put the money in for that one year to limit what those multi-grade classrooms were. We had one still at Afton, but then the next year naturally, when we moved all the kids, it balanced out our class sizes. Does that, does that make sense?
So, after that year, which is what, two thousand sixteen, there's not a need to do that?
Right. Class size, the class size reduction for the purpose of multi-grades, correct?
Yeah, which is kind of George's question.
Yeah, we don't have to, we don't need that. The transition dollars have all been spent for purposes of trans, giant transition district-wide. The initial two million for technology is what John used for all that infrastructure that we've put into place. So, it isn't an ongoing thing, but it got us updated, I guess, and reset.
Sorry, so was this, I can't remember when the decision was made, was it in sixteen seventeen school year?
For the set-aside?
Yeah, that we
No, the
Where was it, the fifteen sixteen?
No, it was
It was, it was for the fifteen sixteen school year.
So I think, and maybe this is a premature question. So, technology-wise, that was two million, it happened in two sixteen. So my question becomes, where are we now or what kind of year?
We have that for you, we're gonna share that. We have ongoing costs and we should be putting about three hundred thousand into technology on a yearly basis.
And that's just for devices?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
I'm gonna look to my board.
What do you need, Jim?
Because I'm not an accountant. The four million, I don't see a four million drop in insurance. Am I looking at the, that's some problem there?
No, it would have been then the, where we, we, our audits would have come in. I mean, because you're looking at, actually, you're looking at, what, one point four mil? And that's four million set-aside. We also, we had revenue increases too. We were able to flatlight it out at that particular, it's not just saying, other things happen during the course of the year besides the four million set-aside. Yes, because that, that was the year it happened and it actually moved it from unassigned to an assigned account. So it pulled it away from available dollars, but a lot of things happened in the available dollars. And, and I will move to the next slide because that might, might help, it's a different visual presentation. And then the, the only other, two things, I, first off, I want to caution because I stated this at the beginning of the presentation. When we look farther out down here, remember budget committee assumptions are only going to twenty-one. This naturally just carries forward. The committee makes three, three-year assumptions, so that's here, here, and here. Anything beyond here, we haven't made assumptions for. So just cautious of that because inevitably you'll end up with a doom and gloom. You just will, because you've adjusted essentially nothing and, so I'd like you to focus on that area. But this is what we're looking at for next year, and I can move back to this slide if you need me to, but let's try a different visual presentation. We are projecting, at the end of this fiscal year to have, and you can see the dollar amounts in white and they're little, but we'll focus on the fund balance at this time, to have approximately a six and a half percent unassigned fund balance. So you're one point six million dollars to the good, above your five percent goal. At the end of next school year, we will be, based on the assumptions, we will be under your five percent goal at four point one percent, which is about nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars under. As we move along, and again, this is assuming no adjustments, year two, we are, we are down to one point nine percent, which is three point five million below your goal. And then we finally hit where we have no money. And that would be essentially five point five million dollars, which is your five percent.
Did the auditor say that he wanted that, five percent was fine, but he likes to see it even higher than that?
He did. He did.
This is just, everything And we're just trying to show you for this first, first conversation that your five percent goal is there and then if you would do nothing, what that would look like in subsequent years.
Okay.
And what's the impact of contracts in here?
So, the contract years that are covered are right to this line. So, again, these are, so we, this is reflective of what we gave in contracts.
Right, okay.
This is not, this is only steps and lanes.
So for that number, you're basically saying no change, the assumption is no change after that?
Just steps and lanes.
So, so assuming then playing back in, the change of contract settlements, one point nine becomes a, the rent goes farther down because it would be an increase.
Yes.
If you do something other than steps and lanes?
And again, you know, just kind of as you get further out, assuming referendum renewal, we're going to, this is the last year that we would, this is, this year would still assume we'd get the money that we get referendum-wise, there's no guarantee on this year, that's why that's highlighted. Like I say, the farther out you get, we're making bigger assumptions. So this just, this model in the, in the screen before it, assume that our revenue stays, you know, consistent as far as referendum and our referendum expires and so.
So question, I just want to make sure I heard that right. So if I look at those last two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, that assumes that the referendum is renewed?
Carries forward as is.
At the same level.
Carries, exactly the same as what we have now.
And that's twenty twenty new renewal, right?
Twenty-two is when it expires, is the last year.
Twenty-two, okay.
Does your six point five to four point one include the one point five increase from the state? Which was the assumption?
It's actually two percent because that's what we got from the state, this, that's the second year of the biennium.
It assumes that two percent.
It does. And then we know that, that's our, this is year two of the biennium, which was, I mean, I'm assuming we're not gonna get any more coming out of this session.
Right, no, I agree.
So we go, you know, our difference here is, this is the end of seventeen eighteen.
Yeah, that's
This is the preliminary assumed end of eighteen nineteen and that is about a two point four million dollar difference. Or, you know, it, or it's below your fund balance policy by nine hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
So related to that, can you walk us through the two point five million that we're seeing in a drop? What is that, what's, what's constituted there that is so big between those two years?
Before you go there, this present status quo, what does this do as far as the assumption and across subsidy?
Nothing.
So it stays as is?
Yes.
Got you, thank you.
As far, what has changed? Contracts.
Is, in our contracts, two point five million or is that just the majority?
Two, four. I want to say when, when we had the conversation in June, when presenting options, it was right around that dollar amount. If we gave up particular percentages on contracts, that's what it would be reflective of, so.
And the twenty twenty-two is when we go to the voters to renew the levy?
Well, you can go when you choose, that's when it expires.
Expires, you go.
So the last election we would need it to pass is twenty twenty-one, fall of twenty twenty-one, is that?
Yes. Well, hmm, let me see. No, 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 I'm just reading, because I do have this written down because it gets confusing over whether you do a replacement or you can just renew. Taxes payable twenty more, renewal question could have, a renewal question could happen in twenty twenty. Okay. Or twenty twenty-one. Or earlier.
Anytime between now and
Otherwise, we'd be
Would be the renewal.
Right, and if proposed legislation passes that says if you're simply asking for a renewal, if they give the board authority to do that, just like they give counties and cities and municipalities, that could also obviously, you know. municipalities, that could also obviously, you know...
But the renewal doesn't help, because you're assuming the renewal, so you're still deficit spending with the renewal.
Right, but I'm saying, at least if the state gave us the authority to get the renewal, because if you don't get the renewal, you're looking at...
Well, then assume an $11 million drop.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, yep.
Give or take.
So when you say on this original sheet, no change in referendums, you're, you're assuming that the current referendum would be continuing throughout this entire, that entire graph? Is that what the assumption is here?
Right.
And that's what gets compounded, so that stays the same, doesn't increase in the assumption. And again, contracts come in. So those are your two big factors in that.
When do the contracts come in again, Bob?
Uh, will we start?
1920.
Start.
What, we have, we have one outstanding, but the large groups start in 1920 again.
So the 2.5 million between 19 and 20 doesn't include contracts?
Nope.
Or it does? Because we wouldn't have assumed contracts.
We're, 1819, all contracts, with the exception of, of one group, is, are closed. Those are settled.
So here, it accounts for it, but here, it doesn't?
Well, it carries forward.
Right, but it doesn't assume any new contract.
A new increase? No.
Other than that, what's assumed is that 960,000 steps and lanes, but nothing beyond that.
Well, that's good news.
Right. So our current reality is, we are $1.6 million, or 1.5% above the board-adopted fund balance policy of 5%, one-time money. The expenses for next year are projected to exceed revenue by 2.4 million, which puts us at a 0.9% below board-adopted fund balance. Day-to-day costs increased annually, cost of living and inflation, supplies, utilities, fees, salaries, benefits, those are, those are just set. State funding is not keeping up with the costs. State mandates are increasing without funding, so they're requiring more of us and not giving us dollars to support. Reduction in federal funding, we had $250,000 this year, which we talked about earlier. And our special education cross-subsidy is approximately $8 million annually.
That 8 million also is, you know, when you look at that, if we didn't have that, what you need to do is, when you look at the, the general education fund allowance, you can take about $1,000 off of that right away, because that goes towards our special education cross-subsidy. So when you look at the amount we're receiving, as that cross-subsidy grows, we, you know, it takes more off of, you know, all of the kids overall. So I think that's just important to, for your perspective, as you look at our rate, how much per pupil. Do you want to talk about the?
Yeah. So the, the chart to the right shows a history. And this is something that the budget committee looks at, to say, you know, even to George's point, who is, who's gonna be in charge of, of the state and, and the representatives as they vote. And you can almost see, you know, what does that look like, depending on who, who had power at that time. But what the percentage increase has meant to school districts through the course of well over a decade. We went for periods without anything, and, you know, lately, we've been right around 2%. But I will say, the average of all of these years is 1.53% per year. And expenses go up, you know, 3%, I think, annually. The CPI, you're looking at certainly over 2, anywhere, you know, up to 3, 4. It can be in that range. So kind of to the point of, that the state funding is not keeping up with the cost. And a reminder that the Gen Ed formula allowance is not, like, when we look at $100 million budget, that's not our full funding. I mean, we're talking about 60-some percent of our funding, so it's not even half of all of our funding. We're just not keeping up.
Is there inflation built into the levy?
There is an inflation factor built into the levy. And I want to say that's about 2%.
Isn't there a period of time where the state kind of held money from the school districts, kind of like took, basically borrowed against the school districts? Did we ever get that money back?
We did. And that was, that's the tax and age shift that I talked about and said we weren't going to. That's where they start playing with that.
So there's some nuance with that, right? Because when Palenti did that, even when Governor Dayton reinstated and gave money back to the schools, there were still so many school districts that never fully had caught up because of the aggregate interest on the loans that they had to...
That they had, yeah.
That were compounded over the years, so.
The state borrowed on the backs...
Oh, good.
No, they borrowed on the backs of schools, because we still need to make cash flow. We still need to do those things, and we didn't get our full payment. Exactly. You know, you receive 2/3 of your paycheck for years at a time, and if that's not enough to cover your bills, you now borrow and you pay the interest, and the state doesn't go, oh, sorry, you had to borrow, here's extra. They borrow from us, and there's nothing, so...
But a gig.
But part of the rationale here is where you gotta be a little careful on fund balance, is that if you looked at that as the aggregate for the whole state, that looked like a prime area to borrow money. And that, in essence, is what the delayed payments did. And so it's tricky, because if you start getting your fund balance, say, to 10% or et cetera, you'd be criticized, you're not a bank. If you get it too low, we know some of the repercussions of that as well.
That's my favorite slide, right here.
You beat me. So this slide has been updated, and it is reflective, the gray is for the pay 17 school tax, and the black is for the pay 18. So pay 17, again, just as a reminder, is the 1718 school year. And then pay 18 is for the 1819 school year. It's what we just did, and everybody just did, this last December. Just wanted to point out, kind of, I know there were a lot of elections in the last few years. This is everybody's catch-up to where we all are to date, because I don't believe there's any elections that weren't represented on truth and taxation notices, or on their levy certification pages. You can see that we currently, on a $250,000 home, our, our taxpayer, George, George lives in a $250,000 home, and he pays $928.75, or will, for his piece of the school pie. If George were to lift up his $250,000 house and move it to South Wash, he is going to pay $1,710.27 for school taxes. There is, and just because I happen to know what happened here, Forest Lake is below, they actually were ahead of us, and they were below us. I think there was some decision-making as far as under levying, over levying and under levying to help with their vote. But that's where they're currently at. That's what you see.
Since we just got our tax statements about a week ago, perhaps if Chris is putting something out in the very near future, I, I don't know how many times you could put this out before people get sick of it, but I think you ought to try to reach that point and get this in every publication that has anything to do with finance. Because I don't think people have any idea about this.
I agree.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it's on radar at all. And I think this needs to be. People are getting a pretty good deal. And I know you, you hear all the time about Washington County, you know, one of the lowest counties in the world, or whatever. And we're not, you know, the commissioners say, well, we're keeping everything low, everything low, everything low. And you, you look at this, we're keeping everything low, and we don't blow it from the rooftops the way they do. And perhaps I should start getting out there.
One thing I would like to point out, I, just because we, we had this discussion during levy time and truth and taxation, was kind of, be cautious not to levy to a particular dollar amount. Remember, we talked about, you know, 30, well, we're going from 32 million to 34 million. And we, I, we had the conversation that it's not the dollar amount, it's the impact to the taxpayer. At least, that was board philosophy at that time, and it appears as though that's still carried forward. Because even though the dollar amount of the levy increased, the impact to a $250,000 home decreased, because our tax base grew. We have more homes, we have more commercial industrial. As long as your tax base grows, you can levy more, and your, your taxpayers don't feel that impact.
But doesn't, didn't, I think I remember asking you a question right around that time too, that how is that determined, how is the enrollment of the district impacting that? Because if the total value of properties went up, but our enrollments went down, because like Hazel said, we're getting older or something, there's fewer students, but more people living here, wouldn't, did that also be reflected in this number?
Well, this is... It is, because it's our total levy.
Right.
And so, but our le- our total levy, dollar-wise, actually increased. So even if our number of students, you know, slightly decreased...
We're not collecting, because we're, we're not collecting, because we collect based on how many kids we have, right?
Again, that's, it's formula-based. It depends on the category that we're looking at.
Uh huh.
Because we have many, I mean, we have school safety, we have unemployment, we have long-term facility maintenance. We, we have all of these different categories. And so that one particular item might go down, because we don't have as many students. But to Shelley's point, there is an inflation factor built in, so, you know, it might not be as big. But then we have other levies that are making up the difference. So if, this number is not reflective of we had a student loss, therefore the dollar amount went down. Because our dollar amount that we're actually collecting is more.
Yeah. The argument by some too is, and again, you've pointed out what some of the fallacy of that. Just because your students go down, doesn't mean your expenditures went down.
Correct.
And I think that's the, when I look at this, not being, not being the finance person, when I look at it, is, that was for you?
Thank you.
That's in case I mess up, and I don't have to find that person.
We will correct you.
But when I look at this, it isn't so much the difference in numbers, like, when we're talking about households and things like that. What it, what I view it as is more of a holistic picture of, this is how much money we have per kid to try and pull off what we're wanting to pull off. And if you look at it in terms of that, if all things were equal, and you take another district that has, not even the top, but even, you look at Hastings, that is bringing in 1167 per student. If all things were equal, and we, we just heard what Kristin shared on the assumptions and that, if we get to the spot where costs are rising for us, where you're, you're getting to a spot where you're spending more money to run what you're running, and not bringing in more money to do that operation, that's, that's when I look at this, I go, wow, you know, what would it look like different if we were bringing in 1167 per kid versus 978 per kid? That's, that's where kind of it hits.
28.
Or 928, sorry.
Okay, no issues, because is that what it is, per kid, or is it per cost?
This is not a per kid, this is a per household.
I'm sorry, per household.
I was all like, I thought I had it, and then...
See, that's why I said I don't have to find that.
Yeah, but it's a tricky business, because people talk in the abstract, the population of students seems to be leveling off, so why do costs continue to go up? And all your previous slides tell you that. But like you said, you gotta be a little bit cautious in the claims and assertions you're making, because there are a lot of things that are fixed, they're gonna go up, and they're gonna continue to go up, but you don't have control over it.
Correct.
Well, I think what George said too is an interesting, for me, tension to navigate, because on one hand, yes, you could say, wow, look at, you know, lowest taxes in the, you know, in the East Metro area. And that has an impact too, right, in terms of what we're able to, you know, provide, you know, services and, and support for our students, how much we're able to compensate our teachers who we know deserve every penny. So I think that's where, and we've had these conversations before, right, like, how does the board, how do we more effectively communicate that that number and where we are in the scope, that has an impact, in what we can effectively deliver to each and every child. So I think we have to do a better job.
Absolutely. And I think to that too, we have to be careful, like you're saying, because we can make it shaming, or we can make it, you know, Washington County, I went to a presentation where they showed us, like, we're second to the bottom, and they're, look how good we're doing with your money. That that makes me feel good as a taxpayer, rather than shaming me that I'm not paying enough. You know, we have to be careful.
Well, not shaming, but then we can't deliver everything that people want, that maybe South Wash can do, because we just, we really don't have the same...
Which I guess, but I think, I think taxpayers could feel shamed, like, okay, so now you're saying we're not giving enough. When, I feel like I'm giving a lot of taxes. So we just have to be careful how we navigate that message, but Chris has said about...
Yeah, I agree, but I think it's just the reality, letting you know.
Well, I think that's, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just, I just want to make sure I understood. Is, is this the number that's actually collected from 2017, and then also from 2018, from a, say, like, a $250,000 home?
For school.
That goes towards the school. So what would happen to that number if we, if our enrollment went up by 1,000 students or 200 or 500 students?
It would, it would depend on the decisions that are made with our other levies.
Meaning?
So if you, if, when I'm in front of you in either September or December, and if we, if, let's say we have $4 million in long-term facility maintenance, and now we're collecting another, say, couple million because of increased student enrollment, I'm going to look to you and say, here is the impact, if we still want the $4 million. And you're, because it's all gonna back to, again, it's going to be our tax base and everything that comes into play, it's going to be, are you okay with this dollar amount? And if not, the student enrollment will stay, and will probably decrease the long-term facility maintenance.
Just to keep putting it...
So if we kept it all the same, if we kept it all the same, this would increase though? If enrollment increased? Is that...
If our tax base grows, not necessarily. Because you're now looking at the next year, and if our tax base grows, even if our levy grows, it might come out as the same dollar amount. It's not a guarantee, is what I'm telling you.
Okay, so if enrollment grows, what would our total levy?
If, let's go this way, all things being constant, nothing changes, including tax base. The only thing that changes is enrollment, and we do nothing about it, that number would increase.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand. Thank you, that helps.
That's a biggie though.
That's a big, yeah, I mean, that's not gonna not happen, but it will hap- yeah, we can't, but, to answer the question.
Yeah, because you know that, even if you got 1,000 students, which, boy, I'm saying, wonderful, where do they end up? And even the students come in, what are their needs? If, if, and, and so that makes it complicated. So those are easy to say, and it's just a general philosophical, but the nitty-gritty, it's more complicated.
Well, and I think that's the segue to the next page, because that's, that's where, we're hearing from Anderson, and we're hearing from other people about wants and needs, and so...
Yep. So getting to the, so the, the purpose of this slide is to start a discussion about kind of themes that we've been hearing for more than the last 12 months, right, from staff, from community, from a variety of sources. But when we look at things like increased health services, academic interventions, resources for technology replacement, just to give you some examples of that. If we were, if we were looking at, right now, what would we do to increase mental health services and put this into kind of, to Mike's point, the complexity of need, right? So what we would look at making a change to is, we would fill out our psychologists at the elementary level, so that we would have one full-time psych at every elementary. So one full-time person at every elementary. That, to do that, would be an increase of 2.2 FTE. So there's an annual, 2.2 FTE, because right now, we share sites. So there's, at 105,000 FTE on average, that's 231,000 annually. So that would be one thing we do. We'd also look at, based on what we've been dealing with, the Anderson situation, the Lake Elmo situation in the previous years, we think there's a real need to have behavior intervention teachers at all of our elementary schools. There's seven FTE. So there is $735,000. So that's what we do with mental health at the elementary level. Then at the secondary level, we'd look at adding a social worker to both middle schools. They currently do not have any type of social work. They have counselors, not social workers. And then two at the high school. So that's four more FTE. That's $420,000. We then have our wellness center that we talked about, that's doing... We then have our wellness center that we talked about, that's doing really well, and is doing so well and so needed that we can't, we can't keep up with the need. We'd be looking at ways to add additional outside professional therapists to that. That goes to the, to add a professional therapist to come into the district. So not one of our employees, but someone from Family Means, or Youth Service Bureau to come in and provide therapy versus counseling. That's about ten-thousand dollars for one day, for one building, all year long.
Is that physical or mental?
That is mental ther-, so that, that is, well, chemical, could be chemical, yep. But to, so if we were to add, the current therapist, if we were to add another day a week for one person to be at our wellness center, so to go, currently, they're, they're three days a week. So if we went to four days a week, every day we add is about a ten-thousand-dollar bill.
Every day of the week you add?
Every day of the week, so annually, it would cost you ten-thousand dollars.
Isn't some of that cost already being covered by foundations and other land properties?
That's why I'm saying, if we were gonna do this, what we feel we need to do is add to that. And so every one we would add to that is, every day we would add to what we currently have. And that's an annual grant as well, so that's not a guarantee that that happens every year.
Is there potential with some of these others to partner with other organizations that would provide these services for us?
Hmm, not any cheaper than what we currently do. For example, you, you, we've contracted with psychologists to help do some of our testing. It's much more expensive to contract with a psychologist to come in and do that than it would be to hire a psychologist as part of your staff, because it, you're, it just, it's more expensive to do it there.
Can you give us a list of these? 'Cause I notice my colleagues here are bas- phrasing to keep up on that.
Yep, I can do that.
'Cause it's somewhere along the line, and I think that's what you're leading to. You gotta prioritize your lay of staff.
Yep. So, and these are just examples to give you some ideas of this. And then, so that would be mental health. If we look at intervention, we would be looking at the secondary level, focusing intervention at this point, which would mean adding one reading interventionist at each of our secondary buildings, and one math interventionist at each one of our secondary buildings. So that's another six FTE, so that's six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars.
Is that, when you say that, is that different than when I was still at the high school? We have Karen Lateral was a reading, I don't even, Joe Staya could probably tell you what the name was, but reading specialist. Is that, that type of person, or is that something separate from?
That is that type of person that would be providing those tier-two reading interventions to kids. So, so if I'm a, if I am an English teacher and I have a student who, the interventions I'm doing inside of my classroom just aren't enough, then they would go to Kathy, who's the reading intervention specialist, and it would be in addition to or replacement of type. The, the person is there to work specifically with those small group of learners in that content area, so reading and math.
Why would, why would that be better than putting those same people in the elementary and catching those kids before they get to secondary?
Where we're at right now, that is part of it, but where we're at right now is we can't turn back the clocks on the kids that are already at the secondary.
Yeah.
So.
You're exactly right, though, if you're world's best workforce, and when you look at those goals, that that's really a focus for re-, kindergarten readiness and read well by third grade. The hope is that you really reduce the amount that kids need.
Well, what you seem to be doing in both cases, I'm, I'm thinking your target audience would be kids who are not proficient.
Correct.
So like for mathematics, what's always tough when you get to the high school level is kids who continue in math and kids who don't. But it would be almost identifying a minimum proficiency that you're targeting. And that's where, whether it's reading or whether it's math, that's what your audience is. So the total number of the reading specialists at the secondary would be?
Would be three, one for each building at this point.
And is there any now, I'm sorry, did you say that before? There's none currently at any of?
Set up like this, no. We don't have that setup.
And those are huge numbers, even when you consider the size of your high school. You're gonna have one of each of those, and then the same thing with your middle school. So basically, whatever the non-proficient numbers are in each of those buildings are huge.
So I appreciate you bringing that up, because what I, again, to the, I don't wanna create a doom and gloom thing, so these are examples of the bare minimum. Like, so now you have to factor in, let's take the high school. You've got a high school of just under three thousand kids. What's realistic for having, for your ninth grade, for students that come into ninth grade that aren't proficient in reading and math, what's a realistic amount of interventionist you should have so that they get caught up as quickly as we possibly can? Then that gets to George's point, how do you matriculate that down to the eighth grade, and then the seventh grade and sixth grade? To some of the questions that have come up, which is what we have to deal with the world's best workforce, right? Is once we identify a student, at least in reading at this point, that's not proficient, what's the intervention set that happens at that point in time until they are proficient? And that's what we have to be focusing on. So again, these are just examples, but you're thinking exactly down the lines of now, in my world, what I'm thinking about as we look at budget stuff, and I'm going, okay, how are we gonna pull this off? Because we've got some significant needs on that side of the house, both mental health and intervention. The other piece that was alluded to, the third bullet there, technology. We talked a little bit on the one slide with the yellow bullets, or the yellow bubbles, with the two million to do all of our infrastructure. Right now, we have, we have Chromebooks across a ton of our grade levels and classrooms. What happens is a Chromebook has about a three-year to a four-year lifecycle. So you have to have some type of replacement system. That's not unique to us, that's everywhere. You've got a plan for that. That was kind of the dilemma we fell into a couple of years ago, is that cycle hadn't been updated. That's about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year cost that, that we, in order to keep up with that, because much of our curriculum is delivered blended in terms of on paper and on the internet now, on a class website, on different forms of technology. And if you go through our high schools, you go through our, our middle schools, you'll see it in almost every classroom. So that and ongoing costs, and three-hundred thousand is just the replacement devices. That's not including continual upgrades to our substructures that are our infrastructure behind the scenes.
And are we questioning anything for that right now?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. I thought we already had that as part of that original big, huge, like, four-year plan that John Perry brought in before my time here. I think it was a big deal, and I thought that was ongoing budget money for year one, two, three, and four. An initial amount in two thousand sixteen, two million dollars, and then an ongoing, I don't know, I remember four-hundred thousand or something.
Other than what Kristen can help us with, that when we end up needing something here or there, I have about two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars that gets set aside a year, K-12.
For technology?
For technology replacement stuff.
Oh, just for the replacement piece?
That's all that is in our side of the house for that.
Can the, can the board do a non-voter-approved tech levy?
Not non-voter.
And that's a part of our, what's called the DW-7 budget, so that's the whole curriculum, professional development side of the house, all of that budget side that I oversee with principals and directors. So it, another way, Sarah, and I'm glad you brought that up, is, so that two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, even though that's not a lot, that's in the same budget that we're trying to pull curriculum stuff out of, that we're trying to pull professional development out of, that we're trying to pull all that stuff out of. And then, just to give you an idea with school safety, because obviously that's been on the forefront of everyone's minds, and, you know, we've, we've begun a ton of conversations, both with community members, with law enforcement. We were just at the Washington County Sheriff's Department today, working through, through items. And one thing I don't think is, has ever come across people's minds is the extreme cost when you start talking about physical plant changes. And so for an example, at, at Rutherford, one of the ideas that's come up is, if you've been in Rutherford, their doors to their learning areas, the learning pods, are a double door that does not have a stanchion up the middle, right? So from a security and a safety standpoint, probably not the most secure. So one of the ideas is how do we redo that door so that we're able to do a stanchion in the middle, so that those doors can lock up against the stanchion? To replace one of those is a twenty-thousand-dollar bill. So now multiply that by all of the, the pods, if you're gonna do that. Now you have about a hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar bill just to do that one upgrade to a building. The other thing that we've looked at is, and has come up, is, well, what if we reinforce glass? 'Cause one of the things that always comes up is that your main office, if it's not what people generally call as ballistic glass or bulletproof glass, let's replace the glass so that that's safe there. To do one office came in at just about thirty-thousand dollars, just to replace glass, nothing else. So if you start multiplying those costs out, 'cause those are just two small examples, across all of our buildings, and what we would need to do, you are well into the millions to what they call fortify or reinforce or build up.
You know, when we were at the state legislature, both MSBA and NC, both days we went, something that was very interesting, we came across, and, and I've got the deputy in the quote, ninety-five percent of those shootings have happened at schools. It's an insight.
Yep.
And, and so my point is, i- if you gotta make some choices here, it seems to me like what I see on top there, mental health services, because, and, and where we've got a little bit of an advantage, and of course, always you get surprised at what you don't know, is our buildings are probably better than most in terms of security. But I'm saying where we're very vulnerable, and I think a lot of schools are, are those services, like mental health services, and how you're dealing with troubled youth.
I think the, the main consensus is it's a, it's a multi-tier, multi-pronged approach to it, right? There's a mental health piece to it. Every building can have some type of an upgrade that would probably help as well, but yes, the mental health piece. And again, this is just a list to start us thinking about. Here's some themes that have been coming up from staff and the community. By no means are they a recommendation to do X, Y, or Z, but it's a starting point.
But somewhere along the line, you're gonna have to say A over B over C, and this is Y, and what's the rest?
Well, somewhere along the line, you as a board are gonna have to give us direction.
Yes.
Is what it is. And let us know where you would like us to put priorities.
Unfortunately, sometimes the physical things are much more of a badge than seen, but the others can be just, if not more important.
And that will be, that's gonna be the importance of, I would argue, your community engagement subgroup, because that's what, the community needs to be engaged in that conversation to understand. Because the flip side of just doing physical plant upgrades is, I would argue, we have just as many families that don't want their schools looking anymore like a prison.
Right.
Right? So there's a conversation piece to this that really needs to take place and balance this all out.
I'm worried about the stanchion thing, because in an elementary school, aren't we gonna have more of a risk of kids running into that thing every, every single day?
Only once.
Letting those kids. 'Cause I think those doors, most of the time, wide open, you know.
So I bring it up only to give you perspective, only to give you a perspective of the cost, right? But if there's any takeaway from that, it is, just know that changing out something as simple as a door can be a twenty-thousand-dollar bill, just one of them. That's, that's the takeaway from it, there's a giant cost to it. The tech infrastructure, that's a tech, that's a capital budget item, that would be separate from the general budget, and Kristen talked about that. And then it's also important to point out, because this has been on people's radar. When we talk about the addition to Brookview, that's a capital budget item. That is not coming out of the general budget. That is, that is not something that, when I talk about all these other needs, that is in competition with these other needs. That's, back to that bucket page that Kristen shared. That lives on the right-hand side, not on the side that we're talking right now, and so that's.
But we'll see some increase, right, in utility costs and things like that, just from having a bigger.
After the fact, yes. So if I take it just to the next slide, or, I'm sorry, I forgot to put that there. Kristen's really already covered the fact that there are other costs, and so this is just kind of a reminder.
Can I say something before we? One of the things we did have a conversation about is, we really struggled between putting the needs and wants categories up there, because I think all of these are things that we all want, or, you know, we've heard that people, it's really important to them. What designates this a little bit differently from our perspective is that the needs are things that are more closely related to your world's best workforce goals. But you could argue that, you know, also having a pathway articulation grade or a seven-period day might also. So I just wanna point that out. We aren't trying to prioritize these for you as far as what you want as a board. This is just what we see from administrative level, what we have heard from our teachers and resources about needing for some of the world's best workforce goals. So that's, I just wanna say that beforehand, so.
So the lower left, again, with the other costs, is just a reminder, as we look at our needs, we do have these things that are gonna continually go up, no matter what we would choose or not choose, so.
Is that a point, point two-five each year for five years for that?
Unless they give us some type of a.
Yeah.
They may give us more than that.
So then what tends to be, you know, people typically say, well, you also have wants, right? So you've got some things that are, for lack of a better term, in competition with some of your needs, depending upon who you are in your frame of reference. Because some things that are needs to one person are a want to someone else and vice versa. But this gives just, again, another example of, we've heard from people with the, with the thought exchange, one thing that's come up is lower class sizes is on people's minds. And I'll talk a little bit in depth about what that looks like on the next slide, but that's something that could be considered a want. We have the idea of expanding opportunities for kids. The board itself has talked about, what does it look like to expand program? Orchestra's one of them. I mean, so you can't discount these things, but it becomes something that you have to go through and say, is it something we need, want, can, can't do, when it's up against everything else? If you looked at wants, when we talked about the middle school model, the high school model, what would it cost to get our kids into a seven-period a day? Give them more opportunities. Activity buses after school, what opportunity would that give kids to be able to participate in after-school activities and get a ride home? Immersion transportation, which we currently don't have. Pathways, articulation grades, so that's that idea of when we went, something along the lines of when we went to Alexandria, or what you see in Burnsville, the whole pathways conversation. All of these things come with a price tag to them in some way, shape, or form. And then finally, a newcomer center for our student, our EL students who don't speak English language, having some place for them to start out at, so that they can get ramped up before we put them into a class that is all English-speaking and they can speak. So that would be some examples of wants. Because class size becomes such a, such a big thing, what we wanted to do is just re-explain to everyone how class size works and how we get to the class sizes we get to. And then what came out timely a couple of days ago was the MetroXU study on regional class sizes. And so what this slide really shows you is by grade, so K through five, and then junior high, senior high is the way it's listed in the study. So for us, it's middle school and senior high. The second column is our current board staffing ratio. So just a reminder for everybody here, and then for everyone in the public, when we, when we go to staff our buildings, what we staff at for kindergarten is a twenty-one-point-four-two. So if we have a hundred kids, that goes into the formula with the use of twenty-one-point-four-two kids, and that's how we figure out how many teachers.
Is that three, is the range three for kindergarten, first grade?
Roughly, yep, yep, there's a percentage in there.
It's four.
Is it four?
Four for kindergarten, first grade, also.
It's four up until you get to the upper grades, and then it's three. That's what I was just looking.
So you'll see that in second and third grade it changes, and then in fourth and fifth grade it changes, and then for our secondary buildings, it changes again. The middle column is our, now I kept everything, so it was the same. All the numbers are based out of the MetroXU study, so we're not taking our independent poll numbers against the Metro study. So in the study, our average class size for K, you can see, was twenty-point-seven-seven. The regional was twenty-one-point-two. So that's how you read this back and forth, is how do we fare? When we're staffing at a ratio in that second column, how do we fare for class average sizes up against where the region is? So if you look at those, we're fairly close. So when, when the conversation comes up, what can we do about reducing class size? A couple of things come into play. And on the left-hand side, you'll see that every FTE we add is an annual cost of a hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. So if I take, if we say we have a super-large kindergarten, and we wanna go from two sections to three sections, to do that, we just added a hundred-and-five-thousand dollars to the bill. That's not good or bad, that just is what it is. So some examples to give you in this.
And just to clarify, that's salary plus benefits for one full-time staff?
That's the average cost of a full-time staff.
Right, okay.
So to give you an example to kind of follow through, if you look at second. So to give you an example to kind of follow through, if you look at second grade up there, where we staff at 25.42, our average size is 24.95, and the regional size is 23.4. So we would say, wow, we really want to try and get closer to that 23.4 average for the region. So we would go to Kathy and say, Kathy, plug in the numbers and reduce our staffing ratio by one. So we would staff at 24.42. When you put that across the whole second grade, you do not see a change in your class size, if we use current year numbers, until you reduce the number by two. And when you reduce the number by two, you still don't see a reduction in more than one building. So one second grade in one building sees an increase in class. You actually have to reduce that 25.42 by three in the ratio column. And here's what that results in. That results in three additional FTEs, and that results in three classrooms out of our seven buildings that see a reduction in the class size. So the point being with that explanation is, we would have to, we can't just, you can't just come in and say, we're going to reduce by one. It may not have an impact, a gospel system. You actually have to reduce by three before you impact more than one building's second grade set, and that's going to cost you three FTE, so $325,000.
But if we commit to world's best workforce, and we say every kid's going to read, and we believe that you can, I mean, because you have to carry that out, you can't just say it's going to cost another $350,000, or whatever it's going to be. Are we committed to world's best workforce? And if we are, instead of putting money into whatever you want, or, yeah, your want is over here, well, we've already committed to world's best workforce. Is that going to help the literacy for those kids that are lowering the class size?
And I think that's the reason why we want to explain all of this information, is because I think those truly end up being the next conversations for all of these.
One idea, just throwing this out for thought, I'm not even necessarily proposing, although I may, is that I follow everything you say. Say you composed a new column there, or actually, it's going to be a roll across, and at second grade, because that's when the jump is, in terms of elementary class size. And suppose you said, okay, let's look at our title schools. And I think elementary-wise, we have four of those. And so what you did at the second grade there is you created, and you just said, the toughest ones are the title schools. And so you just added one at the title school. In other words, you played with those numbers there. It would at least say, okay, have we broken the program down? And in some ways, and that information I don't have, I'd have to hear from Karen or somebody like that, what exactly are the title kids getting in reading now? And are they already getting that needed help? Because what I think some might argue, depending on the proportionate number of kids that you have are free-reduced, or special needs kids, it makes those numbers easier or harder. And so I'm saying, could you, if you added just one section at each of those title schools, and it's however many to do that, pull it off? Is it four teachers? And what the cost would do, that might make a kind of a middle strategy in here that you could play with.
And I think that, I think that gets to George's point.
Yes.
Could you look at doing it differently? You could. And let's say you went down that road, and you said, we're going to add, in second grade, we have a huge need, and so we're going to add an additional section. The thing you have to then say is, we're committed to that, so we're committed to the $450,000 annual cost for that. And where does that come from, and how do we support it?
And I'm saying, one part is to say, okay, what's it going to cost? Another part is, what are you trying to do? And if the output you're presently getting, particularly at those schools, is greater, maybe it's worth the investment.
Yep, and I wouldn't disagree with you at all, which is why, a couple minutes ago, I said, this is food for thought, because let's just follow that line, let's follow that line of thought. And the board gives us the direction to say, we really want you to focus on our Title I schools. The next part of that conversation is, if we're going to live inside of the same fiscal sandbox, and we're not going to take away from it, and we're not going to add to it, where do you want us to get that money to do that from? I mean, that becomes that conversation, to which we don't have the answers to it.
Yeah, our priorities.
Yep, the priorities. Yeah, that's great. Delia? Yep?
I can add that.
No, go for it.
But Bob, to frame it though, we have to really, it all has to be framed around world's best workforce.
Correct.
And that's, I think that has to drive all of our conversation, whenever we hear about, you need to reduce class size at the kindergarten level, you need to reduce size at the fifth-grade level. If we're saying it's, we've committed to world's best workforce, which we have to, isn't that the response, saying, you know, we're looking at this as part of world's best workforce, if that becomes a priority or a need, we will adjust it and work to do that through that lens?
I think that's the first part of it, and the second part of it is much like the question about the money per household. It isn't as, the solution isn't as simple as adding one teacher.
Right.
Or increasing this. It's a complex problem that we need to have discussion about to make sure we're actually getting at the root of what's going on there.
But taking, and I'm not saying this, results will necessarily show that, but if you have a disproportionate number of kids in title schools, who are not becoming proficient, that might be one way to get at it.
Well, and to Tom's point, I think if we're answering the question, what is best for kids, I think it's going to fit into the world's best workforce. So I'd rather it be what's best for kids than how can we make this work out.
And again, the only reason for showing the class size thing is to help you with those responses to people, that it isn't as simple as saying, let's just reduce class size.
Well, and my question too is, how do we, what's the process for us to be able to make those decisions? I mean, it seems like we need to talk about this more often than we have been.
So...
You know, and, you know.
That is part of...
How does that, what does that look like, I guess, is one of my questions.
And that is, at the end, that's what we're going to talk about, what you want that process to look like. Remember, tonight is just to give you foundational information, answer the questions that you've had about cost for different things, how we do things, give general information about where we sit. And then we get to decide, you know, what you want the next steps forward, and how often you want to meet, and what you want us to look at. I was going to ask Bob one more thing about class size before we move on. I know we're past our timeline, and the board chair wants to keep us on target, so we're going to quickly share the last pieces of information. We know it's been a lot, and there's a lot to absorb, but there are just a couple more things that we wanted to share with you.
Just at the secondary class size, if you took your 3308, it's a little different way, we calculated it a little bit differently because kids flow. But if you reduce to 32, if you reduce your ratio to 32.08, that would require an increase of 5.27 FTE to do that. So just by reducing our secondary class size average, so sixth grade through 12th grade, by reducing that ratio by one to 32, that would cost an additional 5.27 FTE to do that. The impactful, I think, information there is that, that's a $553,000 expense, and if you then divide five, a little over five FTE across those grade levels, that works out to only .75 FTE per grade level. Reason for explaining all of that is, we have to, back to the, we've got to be really careful about just saying we want to reduce class size, and we need to be very thoughtful about where we're putting staff and what we're spending our money on. To your point, Shelley and Tom, does it support what our goals are, the world's best workforce?
All right.
Go ahead.
We have, there's two areas when looking at finances that, and they're not mutually exclusive, that can present opportunities for us. One is to review the revenue side and make adjustments there, the other is on the expenditure side of the house. We have talked about non-voter-approved levies. Last year, we had actually numerous conversations about the other post-employment benefit levy, or OPEB levy. And we could do that for up to $1 million a year. That would go into effect now, starting in the 1920s school year, but that would be a million dollars, up to $1 million influx into the budget.
June?
So, and I'll get to, we do have a calendar. And then QComp levy, and there, we do collect aid for QComp. We do not currently levy for QComp. There is $91 in levy per student that is available, which would generate approximately $745,000 a year.
And that would go directly to teacher salaries, right?
For bonuses.
I am going to defer to the QComp committee person.
I would, I would say no, I would say that would have, so QComp is an agreement between the school board and the teachers' union, and I would argue that there's ways to offset or increase our instructional coaching staff with that money, and not just putting it on to additional stipends or salary for staff.
But it's important to note, Bob's words there, that it's the offset that helps the general fund, it's not the increase. So if it's something we're currently doing, and we use those levy dollars to offset what we're currently doing, that helps. If it's an addition to, it supports the academic goal, but it doesn't help the general fund.
The reading interventionists?
So it could, so for example, we pay for three, I have three instructional coach salaries that are paid out of our side of the curriculum professional development side. You could offset that with this, and then that frees up...
More money for professionals.
Could.
That would be a QComp levy committee decision?
That would be an agreement between school board and QComp, SCEA. Yep?
Yeah, okay, I think we're saying the same.
And that's the same analysis for the OPEB levy too, right? I mean, you're not adding more money, you're able to direct what we've been taking out to pay OPEB and use it in other ways.
And then there is the voter-approved side. We do have room, and again, it could be the flexibility anywhere in between, but this is listed at the most. If we were to say, let's go to the estimated cap of when a levy could go into place, it would be approximately an additional $465 more per student, which would generate a $3.9 million per year, if we were to go all the way to the cap. And then anything that would be chosen to be done to support technology that the general fund is currently supporting, if we went to the voters for that, that too would, and that is, we're not limited, we could ask for whatever dollar amount we wanted to for what's officially titled a capital projects levy, and you see the asterisks, we could go out for up to 10 years with that. Those are your revenue options.
Before you go on?
Yes.
Just as a, for people who may not know, when we went out for the levy last time, we levied almost at the cap, but because of changes in legislation, they gave us a bigger, is that what it was?
Yes, that is correct.
A bigger amount there we could go for.
That is correct.
Kristen, do you know of any of many schools there with the max?
At the cap?
At the cap.
At the cap, you mean?
Yeah.
I do not know that answer.
See, I don't know of anybody, but that doesn't mean anything, it just means...
We have a few that are grandfathered over.
Yeah, we know about them.
But I honestly don't know.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if you're pondering that at all, that's a good way to find out.
And then, as far as the planning process goes, you can see June of 18 is circled. That's when we will be adopting the budget for 1819. And you can see how the flow of financial decisions, and when we know state funding, when things change, this is just kind of give you the timeline of when we do things. You can see the three-year budget production, that's when the committee's finalizing, and it's the same all the way through. To Sarah's question, what would be the timeline? By June 21 of this year, preliminary decisions on OPEB and QComp levies, because they're non-voter-approved, would at least initially need to be made by the board. And why I say initially is because that's when I would do my input, in July. You would see the preliminary levy in September, and you can always choose to under-levy up to December. I can't add it after July. If that decision isn't made, we can't go back in September or October and change our mind. So it's, we can add and remove, but we can't add late. Does that make sense?
Yep.
If the board were to choose to do something election-wise, calling for a referendum, as per legislation, the last date is August 24th, we do have a meeting August 23rd. So if you were going to move in that direction, that would need to be finalized with a resolution that night. And then December 13th is what our scheduled truth and taxation hearing date is, and that's where you could make your final decisions about the non-voter-approved levies.
Is that August 24th, is that for a non, that's for a voter-approved?
But that's the last date.
You're actually finalizing your resolution.
You're calling an election. It's not...
So you would make your decision. Well, and I think she's looking at the short amount of time, but we would...
There's months of conversation leading up to that.
That you can't do it.
Yeah.
But going the other way a little bit, two significant pieces of legislation that we ought to know by the end of May, are the pensions, and the governor at least, the only one to do that, so far has set aside a certain amount of money for cross-subsidy.
Correct.
So I mean, those may even have an impact on the budget in looking forward.
When does that vote make?
Well, the pension bill passed through the Senate.
Pension passed, what about the cross-subsidy?
That would be more likely, I think the session's supposed to end in May, about 25th or something like that. So I mean, they've got to go one way or another, act of no doubt. Likelihood of a special session.
All right. So the board considerations, what we need to talk about again today was to show you the foundation, where we are, give you a sense of what our revenue and expenditure has been and could be, and really start to situate you with information to make decisions moving forward. And our question is, how do we want to fund the necessary interventions for world's best workforce, or any wants that you might have that are listed, and our community has shared, and sustain them in the future? And the reason we put the Venn diagram over on the side is just to remind us that, you know, we really want to be thoughtful about as we do this, that are they desirable, is it something the board and community deems as desirable, can we sustain it? And can we even do it? So those are really the questions we ask when we start looking at some of these, because to put systems in place that are only there for a year or two is not helpful for our teachers and staff when they're trying to work with kids. We really need to have sustainability. School boards have lots of options. Well, I maybe shouldn't say lots. You have options!
I don't say.
I shouldn't say lots, and they're difficult. You know, one of the things I just want to remind you is, you're not the only board, right? Every school board is struggling with these same questions. When you are trying to keep up with the increasing needs of our kids, and not having the funding to, you know, when you can just look at, and see that average, our increase is 1.5, and our cost of living is 3.2, something's got to give. So some of the options we have are do nothing, and we can use some of our fund balance reserves, knowing that that may have an impact in the future, and knowing what our auditors would like us to keep that at. We can utilize some of the OPEB and QComp levies that we haven't realized to the max in the past. We can request additional levy cap from our voters to help sustain or add some of the programs and supports that we are hearing folks want. Or we can reduce expenses, and we can look at class size and contracts and programming. So those are kind of the big buckets for us to consider moving forward to that June 21st date. Remember, June 21st is when we have to approve our budget for the coming year, and so...
We'll actually approve at first meeting in June.
The time between now and then is, you know, the time that you have as a board to decide how you want to move forward. So our question really is, we've shared a lot of information, and I know, you know, for some of you, if you've seen it before, it's like, yep, this is, this is what we're used to, but for some of you, it's, you know, you might want to think about that a little bit. So what we'd like to know is, what would you like to see? And, you know, do you want your finance working group to sit down and talk with us about a calendar, and how to work that out, and then bring it back to you? Or do you want that to be another topic, another work session? It really is your choice what you want. We're happy to do whatever you need.
I would like one thing, under the reduced expenses programs, I know we ultimately end up being the bad guys, but what programs would you suggest that could be cut? I mean, I've been on the board long enough where we've added, and we've added, and we've improved, and we've added, and we know we should be cutting to balance costs, and we don't really cut. So I would like to see a list of, here's a half a dozen potentials, you'll get heat, no doubt, we'll eventually get heat if we vote for it, but, you know, and you'll have 9,000 kids in a program come and cry, but what, what could you give us as examples?
I would like to, and to George's point, you know, with the...
I would like to, and to George's point, you know, with the, with the various contracts, you know, I, who wants to say it? I'll say it. You know, we have to be realistic with, with what we spend our money on. And I guess I would have liked to have had a tough conversation prior to all of these tough decisions that we made. I want to see it on a consistent basis. You know, I, nothing is more important to me than a strong community and strong teachers and teachers who want to be here. But we can't afford it right now. So I, something's got to give. And I think we need to have a look in the mirror, come into Jesus and say, all right, we can't afford all of this. What do we want? What is our goal? World, work towards world's best workforce. Talk to the community, not in a shaming matter, but to say, look, this is, this is a reality. And I, this community, I, I believe in it. And I believe this community will rise to the occasion once they see what we're dealing with. And I'm sorry, I think everyone has, everyone has to play a role in this. The community, the teachers, every single one. We do, we, we need to do a better job communicating. We need to do a better job of looking, I appreciate your comment about the programs. You know, what could we cut, don't cut, what have we cut? And we need to be more macro about this and change the shift culturally in this community. And I do believe that they'll, they'll follow. But we have to do a better job all across the board. There it is.
Well, certainly, I think we have the OPEB question coming up that we talked about a lot last year. I thought that was a good conversation, but it's certainly going to come up again this year. Q-COMP is also going to be coming up. Those are two opportunities that we have right away that we don't have to go to voters for approval. We can make those decisions to gain those funds on our own, which would help a lot in offsetting some of those costs and expenses that we.
But you have, you have voters who don't like to, that don't, that are, get upset when we go do non, any kind of non-voter approved levy. And I appreciate that and I respect that. And so we need to do a better job of explaining to our taxpayers how we're in the situation that we're in. And then I think they would follow. We need to do a better job.
Well, I agree with you and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just trying to point out some opportunities so we can end on a little bit of a note of, of maybe a path forward and optimistic note. These are things we have opportunities to look at coming up. And it sounds like we are interested in continuing this conversation, taking that deep dive into what options we have, what programs are we doing? Are they all really bringing us the best bang for the buck? You know, are there opportunities for us to save some money? Are there places where we could invest differently and get, you know, better results? Are there ways to do things differently to save some money? Are there ways we can raise the revenue a little bit somehow? You know, there seems like there are a lot of things we could be really innovative if we took the time to really work on it together, you know? It seems like that's something we're interested in doing.
And with that, I think comes the conversation prior, a realistic conversation prior to some of these big decisions that we have had to make. Because I feel that, you know, with this mental health, you know, this sickens me that, you know, we've got these, these problems in our schools. This absolutely breaks my heart. And I look at this and think, holy cow, we can't afford it. We can't, like, at least where we're at right now, how do we afford it? And I'm so bothered by that and I, we need to do a better job, all of us together.
Well, and I think to Sarah's point, it has to be a both and, not an either or. We're going to have to cut some things, we're going to have to see. And I really want to look at everything kind of together and make a comprehensive plan about how to move forward and what we want to do, non-voter approved, voter approved, what programs we need to cut and come to look at it all together instead of just slashing different things or throwing things in there.
My, my two cents is, I think, from being on this board now for almost eight years, everything comes back to the budget. And I think from what I'm hearing from people is, everyone wants to understand the budget because everything is directed and guided by it. I would like to see maybe the finance working group come up with an agenda that I think at least initially, because we have questions coming up like the Q-COMP and the, the OPEB levy, that I, I would like to have a meeting once a month just to address topics like this. I mean, at some point, it may become that we don't need to meet. But I think, I think our community needs to understand so that, you know, I don't get the emails saying, well, I just want to reduce class size. I want to reduce class size at the kindergarten level. You know, I think if we're out there and they see this and watch this and understand how we're working with our strategic plan and the world's best workforce, I think at least on a monthly basis, I can commit to that. Because I think, I think the community really needs to understand that we're a $100 million organization, but we really don't have $100 million to spend on a lot of things.
Remember that, yeah. Remember that 11%, wasn't that, that we shared at the first.
Building off that, it seems to me what might be a good idea. I like your idea of meeting once a month. I think what you may want to consider as, as a subcommittee is widening that meeting. In other words, for example, one, and you'd have to put it out there as a public meeting, but any board member ought to be able, even if they don't participate, to come in, listen. I think also opening it, especially if you're trying to win over the public, the more people you get to watch. That's going to help you in the long run. So you might want to consider that.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree. I'm just thinking for, just for managing the logistics, I would think that the budget finance group would come up with topics and then we would talk about them at this meeting on a monthly basis.
Yeah, I agree. And I know you're saying, Kristen and I have talked about it and we can get some.
But the whole board would need monthly as a learning session to continue the budget discussion.
That the public would be invited to?
Just like tonight.
Okay, I'm on board with that.
I love that idea because one of the things I've been thinking about is that, I mean, I'm still relatively new here and I feel like there, there's a big, I don't know what the finance group is doing. I don't, we don't really get regular reports. We get the treasurer's report in our packets. But other than that, it's not really clear to me because we don't really get minutes or updates usually from those meetings. So I think that it's such a big thing, as you said, Tom. It's such a big and important, it really is the, the rudder that drives everything is the budget. And so I've just been feeling a little bit in the dark on some of that. Would like to really know more about the processes, the systems, the timelines, how we make decisions, who's involved in those decisions, all of it, you know?
And I did send that as update because it is new chair. I mean, we've only met once, I think Shelley, Tom and who else was on it last year?
I was on it last year.
Yeah, and I don't know how many, how frequent your updates were and what you guys sent to the board. But, but I think that's something that, you know, definitely can be part of the conversation. I also think that, you know, from my perspective, we also have to be really mindful of our role because we can't start getting into the management and the minutia and the daily operations of, of, you know, the daily operations of, of how the district is run. Because that's not our job. So I think we also have to be mindful of having the information the board needs to make our decisions, but making sure that we are, are also staying in our lane. Because I think this is one that can be really easy to kind of be like, hey, what about this? And before you know it, you know, we're taking on the role of, you know, director, whole Heisman's job.
I just want to interject for a sec. I, I'm interpreting your comment that, that you're more just, would enjoy hearing or seeing an update of what was discussed at the finance meetings, not as much wanting to interject your, this is what I want you to talk about more. You just want an update about what was being discussed.
Exactly.
Well, and this is a new role, what we're asking them to do at this point. Because I think, you know, for me, I think we need to start with the Q-COMP and the OPEB levy. I mean, I, I think, because that's coming up quickly.
But don't you think in a sense, what we did tonight was a glorified example of what you're doing in the finance committee meetings?
I don't know. I, I mean, I'll speak for myself. This is more in detail than a finance committee meeting. A finance committee meeting up until this point was, the, like, one would be the auditor report would come in, we would go through it before they would present it at the board meeting. Not anything is in-depth as what we're doing tonight.